Welcome to the May 5th Cinco de Mayo Meeting of City Council. Tonight's invocation will be by Mr. Schilling and then the pledge, please stand. After you silence all your cell phones for the duration of the meeting, please.
What, no margaritas tonight?
That's on you afterwards.
Dear Lord, we have so much to pray for. We can pray for ourselves, we can pray for our family and friends, we can pray for our enemies, we can pray for our city and our country, we can pray for the end of sickness and wars, we can pray for the safety of our first responders, we can pray for our leaders. Let us take this moment and pause so that each one of us can reach out to you in silent prayer. We pray that you will grant comfort, peace, and strength to all. We thank you, Lord, for the privilege of coming to you in prayer. We believe that you are working to answer our prayers according to your purposes. May your will be done and may we experience the everlasting life that Jesus came to give. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs.? Mrs. Westhall?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mrs. Sne?
Here.
Mr. Whitten?
Here.
Mrs. Marshall?
Move to excuse Mrs. Marshall.
Second.
Motion to excuse Mrs. Marshall by Mr. Whitten, second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westhall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Whitten?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall is excused.
Thank you. First thing we got on the agenda tonight is we're going to recognize our outgoing members of the mayor's youth council. And since the mayor is under the weather, Mr. Kerber and Mr. Davis are going to fill in and handle that.
Mr. Davis, coming into here and myself, and I had the privilege of working with some of our next generation of leaders. And we were really blessed to have an enthusiastic, energetic, just a vibrant group to share some time worrying about the city this year. So tonight we want to recognize them and issue a certificate that's signed by the mayor. And thank you very much for participating and we wish you well and we'll miss you.
Hey, I was gonna say, I thought it was a great class, although my class, or my team did not win the scavenger hunt. I'm gonna give revenge next year. But we start in September and each month we do a different event. So we've done things such as go off to Walco, tell the museum out there, we have to shoot up rockets, and we ended, of course, with the scavenger hunt. We always do, one of the favorite events is what's good and what's bad about Troy. So you can kind of see it from the eyes of these super graders, what they want to see and how we plan in the future. So it's definitely a fun program and I hope they enjoy it.
So what I'm gonna do is so everybody can meet this group of kids here, we're gonna call them all up and we'll give them all the certificates for their participation. And then we'll get a group picture. So once I call your name, please come on up and we'll get started. Abby Yelbres. And we're gonna sort of spread up all along there. If you want to go down there. Dino Bennett. Mackenzie Kennedy. Caleb Byrd. Caleb Yale. Karen Dreward. Olivia Davis. Olivia Bolton. DJ Tuma. Gracie Witt. Carter Bussi. Madeline Banser. Liberty Pierce. Violet People. Juice Carr. Georgia Twist.
She'll be here in a minute.
Ally Guffin. Thomas Bim. Emily Wall. And Isaiah Terrell. All right, please join me in a round of applause.
Double deck 'em, Tim, so they get pictured.
Squeeze together.
Hop in there, Grant.
All right, here we go. On the count of three. One, two, three. Can the parents make pictures? You're more than welcome to grab a picture.
Get a picture with Tim in it.
Hop in, Tim. Hang on, one more.
One more.
Got one more coming.
And as reward for these students for being such great students, we are not going to force them or their parents to stick around for the rest of the evening.
But they probably want to. Okay, next on our agenda is a public hearing for ordinance O-152025. Mrs. Knight, would you please read that?
An ordinance changing the zoning of parcel ID number DO8105472 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from R4 single-family residential district and OC1 office commercial district to M2 light industrial district, generally the location of 191 Commerce Center Boulevard.
We declare the public hearing open. We ask for persons to speak supporting the resolution or against the resolution. Come forward, get to podium, give your name and address for the record and say what you would like to say.
Good evening, council. My name's Jenny Bolton and this is my husband, William Bolton, and we are residents at 85 Norbert Drive in Troy. That is the first residence south of this property that's requested to be rezoned. So we have several concerns that we'd like to vote, or voice tonight. First and foremost, we want to express that we are not in opposition of commu building on the property that is currently owned and zoned as M2 light industrial. Our concern lies with the rezoning request of the R4 parcel that surrounds our property and other neighboring properties. We will be referencing the city of Troy zoning code to outline our concerns in Section 1131.02 titled Purpose and Intent. This paragraph states that the city intends to promote health, safety, morals, and general welfare of its residents, businesses, and visitors through the following objectives. In line A, it says to prevent community needs and priorities from becoming subservient to the regional market pressures. Our rebuttal to this is by allowing this variance, the city of Troy is putting the regional market above the needs of the community surrounding this area. Flooding, noise pollution, light pollution, buffer space between residential areas are all concerns with regard to this rezoning request. With regards to line E of the same section, that states to separate incompatible land uses and cluster compatible and mutually supportive land uses. Our rebuttal to that is the R4 zone in question is already incompatible land but leaves adequate space between the established residential area and the new industrial buildings that are being proposed. Section F, I'm sorry, line F, to create physical buffers between zones where generally beneficial and within zones where tensions or conflicts may occur between dissimilar land uses. The R4 zone creates a physical buffer between the established residential area in Concord Township and the M2 zone within the city that's already there. With regards to line M, to fairly balance the interests of property owners and occupants in continuing their non-conforming land uses against the community interest in achieving full compliance with the zoning code, we state that we purchased this residence knowing that it was a R4 zone surrounding our property and that the M2 zone was already in existence. As well as the purchase, as well, commu purchased the property knowing that the R4 zone was already in place as well. So they had knowledge of that when they purchased. They knew what was zoned for M2 and what was already R4. Changing the zoning now will not be in interest of the property owners that are surrounding that R4 area. In line N, it states to protect floodways and floodplains from development, which increases the general risk of flooding or puts occupants of the development at risk. The R4 zone area in question is already prone to standing water for multiple days after any amount of rain despite the storm drains that are already in place in that zone. This water overflows onto the north and east sides of our property. We fear rezoning and building in this area will exacerbate the current flooding issues that we already have. Line O, to preserve and enhance property values. Our rebuttal to that is keeping the R4 zone in place will increase the buffer between our residence and the industrial area, thus distancing the noise and light pollution and helping maintain our property value. Rezoning this area to M2 would decrease the buffer zone, thus reducing the market value of our homes, as stated by a real estate agent that we spoke to in the area by the name of Amy Wilt. Moving on to Section 1137.08 titled Procedure for Variances, the appeals board shall not grant a variance as authorized in Section 1137.08E of the zoning code unless it evaluates the proposed variance in view of the following criteria and makes written findings of fact as to these criteria and any other matters that the board may find relevant. Variances shall only be granted upon the determination and practical difficulties existing with respect to the property in question that would render strict application of the zoning code inequitable in determining whether practical difficulties exist sufficient to warrant a variance, the appeals board shall consider and weigh the following factors. So we've outlined the factors that if this should go to appeal, what we would like to have looked at. Section F1, line C, whether the essential character of the neighborhood would be substantially altered or whether adjoining properties would suffer a substantial detriment as a result of the variance. In response, our property and the surrounding residential properties, there are actually 11 total residences that are affected by this rezoning request along with ours. Our property and the surrounding residential properties in the neighborhood would suffer detriment, including the loss of property value, increased risk of flooding, light and noise pollution. Also, there is livestock on adjoining properties that would also adversely be affected by light and noise pollution. Section F1, line E, the property owner purchased the property with knowledge of the zoning restriction. Again, we stated previously, but in 2020, we purchased our property knowing since the R4 zone was established, thus providing a buffer between our property and the M2 zone. Commu also purchased their property with knowledge of the zoning as the zoning has not changed. Section F1, line J, approval of the requested variance will not materially damage the public health, safety, morals, convenience, comfort, prosperity, or general welfare, and adjoining properties will not suffer substantial detriment if the variance is granted. Our response is if the variance is approved, the committee has failed to uphold their obligation to meet the criteria listed in this zoning consideration for variance. In Section 1149.11, this is titled Screening and Buffering. It is the purpose of this section to safeguard the health, property, and welfare of the citizens of the city of Troy and to promote a high-quality visual environment by regulating and controlling the design, location, and use of buffer strips to reduce the level of light and noise emanating from certain zoning districts within the city of Troy. This plans we received, this notice that we received in the mail from the city, it outlines where the building would sit along with some drainage water surrounding our property. There is no mention of landscaping or other plans to reduce light or noise pollution. We would like to request that a land burn be built between the residents affected by this rezoning request in the M2 zone to reduce the level of light and noise emanating from this zone as well as creating a visual buffer to the facility, parking lot, and the trailers that will be in use. Lastly, we would like to reference Section C in the memorandum from Austin Idd Miller, pardon me if I'm pronouncing that wrong, in the application. It states in Section C whether the uses would be permitted, I'm sorry, let me back up. With regards to this memorandum, he, Austin, listed why he thought that it should be approved by the city. So we have just two rebuttals to that. In Section C, he stated whether the uses that would be permitted on the property, if it were reclassified, would be compatible with the use as permitted on other property in the immediate vicinity. Austin wrote, "The proposed use is compatible and similar to the industrial uses that currently exist directly to the north." Our rebuttal to that is that Austin has failed to mention or even consider the residential properties surrounding the areas directly south of the zone. He only mentions the area to the north. These are completely different areas. We have a manufacturing, light industrial section, and then a fully residential area to the south. And in Section E of the same memorandum submitted by Austin, this section states the amount of vacant land that currently has the same zoning classification as is proposed for the subject property, particularly in the vicinity of the subject property, and any special circumstances, if any, that make the substantial part of such vacant land unavailable for development. Austin wrote, "In the vicinity of the subject property, there is minimal vacant industrial land available for development. Only 16 acres of M2 light industrial district is vacant in the immediate vicinity of the subject property." Our rebuttal to that is that we would like to contest this number. We believe that based on the media reports that were released announcing this, that the land available for development is larger than 16 acres. There is also a large portion of land, as demonstrated in these drawings, that were submitted to the city that would be available for development between the existing commu building and the proposed building submitted to the city as Exhibit C in the application for the zoning amendment. So we would like to ask the city to please consider all of these concerns that we have put forth in considering this rezoning request. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. My name is, excuse me, Neil Staley. This is my wife, Mallory Staley. We reside at 80 Norbert Drive. As you just heard, that was well put and she lined out. She's been heading this, spearheading this initiative with the whole neighborhood and she couldn't have said it better, all the different...
You second everything she said.
Ditto. Yep. I mean, you couldn't say any better. She went through line by line. The whole neighborhood is in agreement. If you can only imagine having a plant like Honda, literally be your neighbor. I mean, from you to me away, having a huge industrial zone or the potential to have a huge industrial factory right there, that causes some concerns for us, the neighborhood, the city of Troy, as is. You know, this proposal, I think the picture that was committed to us, you know, had the parking lots and trailers designed right to be up against their property line and ours as well, where it currently sits, there's a huge parking lot that they can use that possibly and maybe shift it so it's not such a eyesore when we're going down McHague. And now with the new school going on the end of the road, you're just gonna exacerbate A, the possibility of cars and children and buses and trucks and all that with this additional spot. And she also mentioned, you know, minimal places to build. Well, as far as I, there's a whole huge industrial complex area for, on 25A, that they could have hundreds of acres out there that's already available. So I know it's not convenient for them, but they don't take into consideration what's convenient for the neighborhood and neighbors of, right directly there. So we feel that as a neighborhood, that that was really not given any thought of just being able to put a huge factory right there and only that, take up that little bit of buffer zone like was mentioned to eliminate that and without any consideration of the neighborhood, like I said. And, you know, we've been in Troy for 12 years. Troy does a great job of considering that, we thought or think, and so that's what we hope to employ you guys with is to deny to the proposal just based on that little bit of, we don't want to start putting, you know, light industrial or medium industrial in residential zones. So where our children and family play and pets and animals and dogs and all that and wildlife and all that stuff that's vibrant in the area and the neighborhood will now be affected negatively.
We're not against the development, we're just, we just think it's the wrong place.
Thank you.
My name's Matt Ryan. I live at 2400 McHague Road. I've lived there for 27 years and I've seen a lot of the development that's happened out there and it's being overrun with traffic. If you could just recognize the existing residents that live there and the stress that it's taken on the road and the people there and everything that she said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig, excuse me, Craig Sweeney. I live at 940 Rosewood Creek Drive, Troy, Ohio, and I get the privilege of being the least popular person in this room tonight. I represent Commu Logistics in connection with its application for rezoning. As a threshold matter, I will say that most, the majority of the facility as submitted in the proposal is currently going to be located on what is currently designated as M2. The only reason for the rezone is that R4 buffer area has to be rezoned for stormwater retention areas and there will still be that natural buffer. But to the extent a portion of the building is located, and when I say a portion, as you can see from the drawings, the current proposal is just a sliver of the building itself will be on that R4, the rest is for that buffer zone that the neighbors are currently worried about. Commu is sensitive to the residents in the area. They have expressed a desire for screening and various other vegetation to block the residential view, which is also why they've proposed the stormwater retention areas in the location that they have, which is most directly next to the residential areas. I will say in response to what's been proposed tonight, a lot of what was discussed is the appeals process and the factors that go into an application for variance, this is not that. This is an application for rezoning. So to the extent any of the factors that were discussed earlier is for a variance, I would urge the council to say that none of those really apply here. And with that, I will just close with, we reviewed the master plan, the city of Troy's master plan with development and jobs. Commu feels this will be a boon for the area and we'll close with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
One question. But do you know yet what's proposed or do they have an hours of operation?
They do not. This is just, the schematics that we were provided is pretty much as far along as they've gotten. They're not able to move forward with any sort of construction or proposals until after we're able to actually build the facility.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brad Gordon. I live at 1605 McHague. My property borders the current water retention area. According to the drawings that I've seen, three-quarters of that's gonna be filled in and turned into a semi-trailer parking lot right beside my house. Lighting, I don't know their hours of operation. I am a little bit torn because I'm in construction. Matter of fact, my company's actually bidding the construction of this building. So I'm not against it. I would like, I don't really care for the location and the layout and all I can do is reiterate what Jenny said. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dan Parrish. My wife and I, excuse me, live at 865 Cartwright Court, which is right on McHague. I'll echo the concern that you just heard a few minutes ago on the traffic considerations. This new school's going right, actually right across the street from where we reside right now. And traffic is, we've been here in Troy for a few years and we've noticed it's more busy, more busy, and this will create, in my mind, a lot more traffic, a lot more semi-traffic. And with the other construction and everything that's ongoing now, it's just gonna exacerbate everything. So I would add my concern to the gentleman's on the traffic is going to be, and opening it up to semi, a lot of semi-traffic would not be good for the area, certainly for the residents along that corridor. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just say one more thing. Jenny Bolton again, do you need me to say my address again? 85 Norbert Drive in Troy. I just want to address, you requested about the hours. I will tell you the existing building that's there, those trucks are moving all night long. We hear the reverse, the beeping when the trucks back up. We can see the lights moving across the parking lot. So I would assume, I know that's an assumed assumption, but I would assume it's probably gonna be very similar.
Good evening. My name is Donna Hormel. My husband, Charles, and I live at 1641 McHague, which is on the northwest side of the intersection with McHague and Commerce Center Boulevard. We've lived there for 13 years, but that residence has been in the family for over 70 years. 70 years. My husband grew up there earlier. We have the longest side yard to Commerce Center Boulevard, so we can observe all of the traffic that is backing up during rush hour between around 2:30 and up to 6 o'clock and around 3 o'clock especially and 5 o'clock, there can be traffic backed up trying to go south on Commerce Center Boulevard onto McHague, 18 cars long. And this has been happening, and it's not just due to the Main Street construction, but it's just a very popular road, a shortcut for so many different facilities, and we see fire trucks coming, ambulances like that route gets them closer to some of the emergencies. There are, of course, school buses that come out about the same time as the shift changes, CAC transports, of course, the employees leaving work, and it's, and of course, the trucks, the incoming trucks especially for Honda. Now, historically, there was an agreement with the city that Honda, the first Honda facility, would route the trucks north, its outbound trucks, and it was, it was a written legal agreement. And even the second facility that Honda built, they seem to be observing that to the, for the most extent, you know. But this third building that they're going to be putting in, from what I understand in discussions with the city, they are open to the idea of Commio proposing using McHague as their major truck route to the interstate and back. And that's a problem. That's never been the policy of the city. The policy of the city is to route the trucks north. We already get a lot of inbound trucks. We don't even know the truck rate of the new facility, and yet we're willing to say we're going to apply for $629 from the state, redo the base of the road for Commio. There are so many other development concerns. We're for development. We don't have a problem with development. But it's also a site for residential development over the years, for now, school development, especially now Troy Christian has bought a large farm, 60 some acres across the street from the intersection with Commerce Center Boulevard and McHague. That's going to be a huge complex when it's done. And of course, the facility that's being built for Concord School is going to also access McHague as well as 718, which will be the route from 55 to Commerce Center Boulevard. So it's going to be compounded. We're not against development. We just want it to be measured, and we want everyone to take a deep breath and say, we're going to do this with all the parties involved factored in, the schools, and we're not just going to jump when Honda says jump, and we're not just going to say how high. We're going to say there's been a lot of development, there's going to be planned development, we need to do this in a measured fashion, and we're not going to just give you the impression that we're handing you McHague on a silver platter. It just isn't going to work. So we have some specific questions about the six acres. Again, the water problem. We have a runoff problem where we live. We get a lot of rain. We have a continuous stream running as the hill comes down from Commerce Center Boulevard, where our property meets that. It can be 100 feet long at times, and it doesn't dry up very quickly. So we're concerned about, you know, the drainage from all those three large ponds, and if it's going to be a retention pond or a detention pond, and how they're going to control the mosquitoes, whether they're going to have all that figured out. We have a lot of sympathy for the people that live on Norbert and the people that are going to be affected, because from what we understand, in 1989, when the M2 zoning occurred, the residents were told that it was going to be an industrial loop that was going to come from Stanfield and go back to Stanfield. Well, then 19 years later, it became the straight road to McHague. But then at that time, Jim Dando said, "It's written in the agreement, and we saw that they were going to route the trucks north," and we held them to that. But the plan was then to acquire the farms across the street and have a straight shot through to 718 close to 55 so they'd have that to go on. So the intention was never to run the trucks on McHague. And now one of those farms has been sold to Troy Christian, so that's not going to happen either. So we're just saying that policy never was to run these trucks on McHague, and we're just alarmed that the city is so open to that now, because that was never the plan, and it's never going to work properly. I know that that's not the precise purpose of this zoning change, but by definition, a distribution center is to move material in and move material out as fast as possible. It's a trucking firm. That's what they do. Yes, they're repackaged inside, and there are jobs that come with that, but it's mainly a, it's a trucking firm. It's a logistics firm. That's part of the name. So where they go is very important. What the city agrees to do and the impression they give Commio by saying, "We'll fix the base of the road just to accommodate you," is just scary to the residents that live there. So we're just asking, we're just asking for a comprehensive plan for the road. I mean, we're for development, we're for residential development, we're for the academic development that's planned, we're for, but we just want it to be a comprehensive, measured approach that takes into consideration all the factors that are involved, and that's all we can ask for at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, my friends. Dave Pinkerton, 2315 McHague Road. I know many of you. I'm speaking of something, ditto to what's been said. I'm speaking of something that nobody's mentioned. Remember that your origin, and that is what's going to happen in the future. Your original plan was for trucks from Honda to go south on Commerce Drive, west on McHague, and north on Washington and Experiment Farm roads. We were told that was going to be the pattern for Honda trucks. Well, we still have a certain amount of trucks going that way, coming in from Route 55, going up Dorset and down McHague, turning right around where Donna lives there, and this addition is going to just add to that. If the present rezoning takes place, maybe you next will approve the widening and changing the Commerce Drive-McHague Road intersection, you or a future council. Then you may approve changing the Concord School intersection even there on Washington Road. You don't know, once you open the can of worms, the Pandora's Box, what's going to happen out there. Every move you make here is unfair and unkind to the residents and schools involved, especially Troy Christian, you know, both on Dorset and then presently going to be behind that T-intersection of McHague and Commerce. That is a shame, since it takes away the buffer area that once was promised to the dwellings on McHague. But after this takes place, I ask you, I beg you, to be careful, fair, kind, and sensible to what you and future councils may do to this area. Thank you for your consideration.
Hello. I'm Brad Ferencoff. I'm the trustee of the property of 2601 McHague Road, and the reason I'm here is concern over the traffic. Since Redwood went in, the traffic has gone up significantly. You're obviously going, well, I'll say the school board is going in with a revised Concord location. I imagine that's also going to drive up traffic as they expand it to take more students. I don't know which way the trucks are going to go. It's not clear to me, but if they, if they go basically south and they go to the right towards the school in Redwood, that's going to be a nightmare for them to try to get to I-75 to go south. They can't even make the turn down there at McHague and 718. And if they go the other direction, you've got that very small roundabout, and I don't know how many of you have seen semis trying to go around there, but let me just say, it doesn't work very well. They're up over the curbs, and it's a mess. So this is not the location to try to be expanding the truck traffic to go to. I agree, if the agreement was to go north, it's a much more appropriate way, and I think that's critical in being factored in to how this whole plan is being laid out, and I'd ask you to strongly consider that for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yep. Okay. Neil Staley, 80 Norbert Drive. The gentleman who spoke on behalf of the trucking company, I mean, he came up and said it right here, "I'm going to be the unpopular guy in the room." I mean, that's, that just is sticking with me sitting there. Like, I thought we were going to be a partnership. I thought we would, you know, consider the people of the neighborhood, not be unpopular, not jam it down your throat, or put the people in the neighborhood in a worse spot than when they come in. You know, that, that whole phrase kind of stuck with me sitting there, and this, excuse me, is growing with me as I'm speaking just because of that attitude. If that's what they're going to have, yeah, oh, you know, the building's only going to be a little bit in that property. Again, we're talking people's yards. You know, it's not like it's 80 acres that you're going to stretch into that it's going to go into. It's literally this size of a room that they're going to put a building onto. So that's a little bit I just wanted to add to what I said previously. Thank you.
Anyone else? We will declare the public hearing. And that the Law and Ordnance Committee will meet on May 12th to provide a recommendation to council on this ordinance. Moving on. Mrs. Knight, could you please read the summary of the minutes of April 21st, 2025 meeting, please?
Minutes of council, April 21st, 2025. Committee reports, Community Partnerships Committee reported regarding joining with the Miami Valley Communications Council for negotiating for streetlight ratings. Recreation and Parks Committee recommended legislation be prepared for a bucket truck for the park department. Resolution number R202025 entered to a contract for replacement bucket truck for streeting and adopted. Ordinance number O62025, excepting storms, sewer, and other easements as shown on the Board of Education, replat was given second title reading. Ordinance number O142025, join with other cities for the negotiation of street lighting rate, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O152025, rezoning of parcel number ID D08105472 was given first reading. Following various comments, council adjourned at 8:06 PM.
Move to accept the minutes. Motion to accept the minutes by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Before we move on, we may want to explain what you just said to the, to, what just occurred about a committee meeting, so if people want to leave...
Your public hearing, you had your public hearing. It gets referred to a committee for them to discuss it, and then they make a recommendation to council. That committee meeting will be next Monday on the 12th at 6 o'clock here, and then it will come back to council the following week.
And the public can come.
And the public can come to any and all of those.
And you're welcome.
In other words, there won't be any other actions tonight.
In other words, we're not going to vote on it tonight.
Yeah, it won't happen tonight, so.
And you will be able to, again, reiterate your concerns and comments at the committee meeting on next Monday. We welcome those comments and, because again, this is your chance to interact with some of the council people, and so again, you're all welcome to come.
Moving on to tonight's committee reports. We have a few, and we'll start with Building and Utilities, Mr. Pierce. After the grand exit, you can continue.
Now we'll get back to normal size, can council meet.
Now let's schedule that meeting after this.
All right. Steve's in his seat, we can go.
Steve!
They're in their seats now.
Down there in his seat, we can continue. Go ahead, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Council President. So this committee met April 28th to review a new water agreement between the city, the Board of County Commissioners of Miami County, Ohio, and the municipality of West Milton, Ohio. A draft agreement was authorized by council in May of 2024, but was not executed by the county or West Milton. A new 20-year agreement would gradually reduce their surcharge from the current 10% to 2.5% over the life of the agreement. If West Milton declines to sign the agreement, that community would continue to have a 10% surcharge, or other options would be explored. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing Director of Public Service Safety to enter into a master water service agreement with the Board of Commissioners of Miami County and the municipality of West Milton with provisions retroactive to January 1st, 2024. That is respectfully submitted by Bobby Phillips, Councilman Phillips, Councilwoman Snee, and myself as Chair, Samuel Pierce.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, Mr. Chair? Yes, sir.
So I did get indication from West Milton, they would, are appreciative of this, they would, they would sign this.
Thank you. That sounds good. Mr. Pierce, you have another one?
Yes. This committee met April 28th regarding the chlorine gas conversion project at the water treatment plant, WTP. This project includes replacing the chlorine process from gas to solids, lime slaker four and three meters. This will reduce the negative impact of a chlorine leak, rupture, or failure. The current estimate, including the contingency funds, is $2,275,000, which exceeds the budgeted amount by $100,000. However, the additional funds are available within the fund balance of the water fund. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for chlorine gas conversion project at the water treatment plant at a total cost not to exceed $2,275,000. Respectfully submitted by Councilman Phillips, Councilwoman Snee, and myself, Samuel Pierce as Chair.
Any questions on that? Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Moving on, Mrs. Snee, personnel.
All right. I'll attempt to get through this. This committee met April 28th regarding a voluntary insurance benefit program for full-time employees. City staff recently requested proposals from qualified insurance providers for a program that would offer benefits fully paid by the employee. Staff recommended that an agreement be authorized with the American Fidelity Assurance Company. That company will provide all the lines of insurance requested, provide additional services to assist employees in making insurance decisions, and assist staff with administration and payroll deduction processes for the voluntary coverages. Offering these voluntary benefits is at no cost to the city. Council consideration is required as the benefit premiums would be paid through payroll deduction. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute a master employer services agreement and any related documents with American Fidelity Assurance Company for voluntary insurance benefits for full-time employees. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Pierce, and myself as Chair.
Any questions on that?
Mr. President, not necessarily a question, but I think I've been contacted about some specific language that has been requested to be put into there, so I would be asking it to go to a second reading to assure that it, that the appropriate language is included in the resolution.
Not a problem. Second opportunity for comments on anything on our agenda tonight by the public. If you have any comments on anything on our agenda, once again, follow the procedures, come up to the podium. come up to the podium, name and address. This time, you'll be limited to two minutes. Mr. Kibber will be timekeeper. Seeing everybody racing up, we will move on to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, could you please read Resolution R-212025, please?
Resolution number R-212025, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for a chlorine gas conversion project at the water treatment plant, cost not to exceed $2,275,000, first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second. Motion to suspend by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please read the roll, please. I'll call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Move to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, could you please read Resolution R-222025, please?
Resolution number R-222025, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into a water agreement with the municipality of West Milton, Ohio, and the Board of Miami County Commissioners. This would be a 20-year agreement, first reading.
Move to suspend.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Move to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
I'm going to abstain, was not involved in the negotiations, but my husband is a county commissioner.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-232025.
Resolution number R-232025, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into a master employer services agreement with American Fidelity Assurance Company for an employee voluntary insurance benefit program for full-time city of Troy employees and, and elected officials eligible for city provided health insurance benefits, first reading.
This is, this is the, the resolution that's going to the second reading by request?
Yes.
That we have all inclusive language that we need to have. Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, could you read ordinance O-62025, please?
Ordinance number O-62025, ordinance accepting storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and bike path easements as shown on the Board of Education replat, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to execute any related documents. This is for the area along Trade Square West where the North School, Hook School site, and this is the third reading.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Move to adopt by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
I need to abstain due to being employed by Troy City Schools.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O-152025?
Ordinance number O-152025, an ordinance changing the zoning of parcel ID number D-08105472 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from R-4 Single Family Residential District and OC-1 Office Commercial District to M-2 Light Industrial District. This is generally located at 191 Commerce Center Boulevard, has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, had a public hearing this evening, and will be the subject of a committee meeting a week from today. Second reading.
Once again, that's committee meeting will be on the 12th, to Law and Ordinance Committee, here at 6 o'clock. We have communications and announcements, Mrs. Knight?
No, sir.
Mr. Tiderington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. First of all, Memorial Day is coming up, May 26th. City building will be closed, trash and recycling will be on schedule. The other part of that is that there will be a ceremony coordinated by, among others, the American Legion. It will be on that date, the 26th, beginning at 11 o'clock at Riverside Cemetery. Prior to that, there will be a small ceremony, as they do every year, on Adams Street honoring the Navy. Don't know why it's just the Navy, but it's always been that way, and so they will be continuing that tradition. Since I won't be here next Monday night, I did want to address a little bit of the public hearing concerns, and I've asked staff to make sure that we reiterate that, these thoughts. First of all, the, the representative from COMEO is correct, this is not a variance request, this is a, a straight-out rezoning request. The issue of traffic and semis, the Honda operations, one of the first projects I was involved in too, too long ago, at least some people would say too long ago, 17 years ago, back in 2008, was ODOT spending a couple of million dollars to extend the right turn, turn lane onto, I guess that would be South, I-75 on West Main Street. The agreement that we had with Honda, I, I don't know that there's anything in writing, we're not aware of anything in writing, certainly not one where it directs traffic to McCag, but that with that improvement at the interchange on 75 and West Main Street, that Honda's semi traffic goes in that direction. It does not go on, on McCag. Every once in a while, that, you know, somebody may get lost, there may be some construction that's going on temporarily, you know, that happens. We, we all get truck traffic that comes through every once in a while, but they have been directed, we did have talked to COMEO to reiterate that, that that would need to continue. We have not seen any kind of development plans. The reference to the, the drawings that are in the packet, in your packet, are simply just sketches, and they are there just to be illustrative, not, they're certainly not anywhere close to the engineered drawings that we will expect once they, they submit for zoning and occupancy, as well as the engineering required subdivision, public works type drawings that they will need to submit. We have talked to them about, you know, the location of their trucks, their, their plan, at least what we've talked to so far, is that their, their trucks, the docks would be on the other side of the building, I guess that's the north side of the building, away from the development, or the, the residential areas. All of those areas, in your packet, you'll see where the corporate boundaries are, the city boundaries are. If you have any questions about that, please, please let us know. So with traffic, the stormwater, stormwater retention was, was also discussed. They know that they have a requirement that they have to meet. They know that that requirement is to not make any storm drainage any worse, but better, which, once developments are done, that's, that's what happens. That stormwater area will be primarily what that R-4 zoning strip will be designated for. The lighting concern, our requirement is, is that we have, we require shielded lighting at any parking lots, whether they're commercial or industrial. Noise, we do have limits on the noise in our subdivision regulations, and in fact, we have some kind of specialized monitoring gadget that will take the measure of the noise level, and if you're over, and we've had businesses that have been over in the past. This is a logistics expansion, that's not doing any manufacturing, it's not doing any, you know, plant widget making, so the noise levels, other than the, the beeping of the trucks, if, if they're backing up, which of course is federal law requirement, or, you know, any of the truck noise, other than that, we don't expect that to be, to be any noise. And again, I mentioned the, the buffering, we have talked about, talked to them about being sensitive to the buffering between the city, the city limits and the township properties that are outside the city that, that butt and, and come adjacent to the, the proposed rezoning. All that being said, again, we will lay all that out next Monday night and be as, as specific as, as possible. COMEO's representative, representative is correct, they, they have not done any kind of detailed design, other than just some thumbnails that we have not seen, but we've discussed verbally with them, so they know what our, our desires and our expectations are, but they're not going to invest in those kind of drawings, designs, and engineering work, especially with the workload of the outside engineers, unless and until this rezoning matter is, is decided. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Auditor, Mr. Friggy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing at this time.
The law director, Mr. Kibber.
I have nothing at this time.
Well, darn, we'll have to break that streak.
First of all, since Mr. Davis is here, congratulate him on organizing a neighborhood cleanup. They went and cleaned up Boyer, did some sweeping on Boyer in Herlinger last weekend. I'm sure the city staff appreciates that, stuff they didn't have to do. Also, from a few people, at least, I know we had mixed, mixed reviews on the people that were in tree trimming from Fitzwater, but at least the ones on the 700 block of Trade Square West and the cul-de-sac of Clarendon did a fine job, didn't destroy anything, did, they did a good job, they were in and out. And other than that, tomorrow, please go exercise your ability, ability and privilege to vote. Mr. Seaver?
I would echo almost everything you said. Mr. Davis, as he's still back there, that was a nice event I intended last Sunday, so thank you for putting that on. Please go ahead and vote tomorrow, it is our civic duty. And as a Ryan Sequest segue into voting, some of you may know this, but George and Cindy Meeker, who were longstanding residents of the city of Troy, and their daughter Katie, who was a graduate of Troy's, Katie's son, later, Neely, is in the top eight of American Idol right now, and is moving his way up, and so he could, when we vote tomorrow, vote tonight for Slater. That's all I've got.
Mrs. Snee?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mrs. Westfall?
Couple things. I was out on a couple of nice days, and I, I didn't get to the cleanup, but I did get to see a lot of kids playing at Boyer Park. I saw kites flying, kids running around, and it was nice to see that park being used. I also wanted to say congratulations to Ruth Jenkins, who is a long-term friend of mine. I worked with her as a nurse 40 years ago at Stouter, and she received a very special award for her work in cardiac rehab through Christ College, and I just wanted to congratulate her. And also, there is a fallen officer ceremony that's going to be on the Courthouse Plaza Wednesday at noon, so encourage everyone to attend that.
Mr. Schilling?
Again, I encourage everybody to vote if you haven't done so already. It is your privilege and responsibility to do that, and so get out and vote tomorrow. It's not going to take a whole lot of time, but it is important.
Mr. Widdon?
Mr. Tider, just seeing if there's any new update, brand-new update on the west, front of the water treatment plant, the road getting repaved there?
So we have a, so we have a, just published a road closing notice for May 8th and 9th. That's when we anticipate that we will begin the, you're talking about the third of an acre of asphalt that we need to put down? Yes. That, that's what the plan is.
Thank you.
Mr. Pierce?
Thank you. I want to thank each one of my fellow council members for approving the improvements that are happening in Herlinger Park right now. The playground equipment is looking nice, it's still being assembled and put together, but thank you guys for that. And also, I want to thank the staff on all the work that they did in putting together this water agreement that's beneficial, not just to Troy, but it's beneficial to our whole county as well. It really makes a difference for people to be able to save money like this, so thank you to the staff.
Mr. Phillips?
I have nothing this evening, sir.
Mr. Twist?
Nothing this evening.
Staff? Public? Want to make any last chance comments tonight? Third and final attempt?
Get together.
Seeing none, we will meet on May 19th. Yes, ma'am? Yes, no? We'll see you May 19th, 7 o'clock.